I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence. him and enter into the next session. Any motion for executive special?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolution. It's also that the board's opening a schedule at approximately 8:00 p.m., or sooner or after as possible, for approximately 30 minutes. This is a discussion personnel appointment, resignation, current resignation, special education matters, negotiation of ideas and matters concerning on the regulation.
Second.
The executive sessions are not being reviewed for such a common, such common as frivolous complaints and allegations.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to open petitions and requests.
Are we going to approve the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Because this is not a regular meeting. I'd like to open petitions and requests. Those who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first. A five-minute petition for a period of 30 minutes and then time to meeting other petition. My request limited to-
A five-minute petition will be allowed until the 30-minute time period expires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. I need them on here. Has anybody signed up? Is anybody interested in speaking?
See and none. I'd like to close petitions and requests.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as laid before you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented this evening.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. I noticed that we have no petitions and requests at the end of the meeting as we normally do. I think in this instance it would be really helpful to the board and for to hear if the public has any comment with regard to our discussions after we've had them.
I have a problem with that.
We just had a petitions and requests at the start of the meeting.
There's very little action taken at the end of the meeting and the budget discussions will not result in a, any kind of a budget vote. So certainly at the, if the board would like, we can add a public comment portion. There's no particular reason-
Do I need to make a motion to do that?
No, Wynden, you can, you can do it.
I can just-
Assuming that, you know, if the board agrees, just in general, it's fine.
I have no problem.
You can put one in anytime.
Okay. I guess I'd call the board members, would everybody, all those in favor of having a petition and request at the end of the meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we'll put it in, can we put it in after the budget discussion? How's that?
Sounds good.
Yeah, sure.
Does that make sense for example?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. O'Brien, would you be able to do personnel?
Sure, absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through eight under personnel student affairs.
Second.
Discussion? If not. This is O'Brien.
Yes.
This is O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Carvino.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
That concludes personnel student affairs.
Thank you. And the discussion on the budget.
I'm just wondering, would it be possible if we could do, I don't know, never mind, thinking that we should do education and then come back for the other, but you know, what?
I hope we can do the first education, but we can't do the second until after.
Right. Okay. Do you want to do that then?
Yeah.
No, we'll just wait. We'll wait until after.
Okay. All right. I guess I'm going to turn the budget discussion over to Dr. Anam.
Well, good evening, board members. As you know, you received your budget book fairly early this year. We made an effort to get it to you at the end of January. I think we were a couple of days late. You know, I received it early February. And there was discussion at our last board meeting that since not everybody is on the Budget Finance Committee, that we were going to schedule an additional board meeting, a committee of the whole, to discuss the budget so everybody on the board could have their voices heard. So we did schedule the meeting and we don't have any particular agenda items to discuss. I envisioned a similar to last year where it was more just an open discussion amongst the board about the budget. So we probably won't have every answer to every question tonight, but we'll certainly take notes and get back to the board if the board needs clarification on an item or two. We don't have, you know, we have the budget summary, so to speak, here. All of our backup is in our offices. So if we don't have an answer for you now, we'll certainly get it for you ASAP.
Is there anyone that has any discussion?
I do.
Mr. Swire?
Our enrollment is decreasing and yet our administration has stayed the same. I would, I still am in favor of realigning administrative, administration for economy reasons. I don't think we need as many administrators as we have because our enrollment is decreasing. Our faculty and staff have decreased. So I would like to see further cuts in administration. Now I'll go under the table.
That's fine. I did just briefly this afternoon go into our last couple of budgets and I wasn't able to look at this teacher staffing. That's been pretty consistent over the last few years, but over the last four budget years, the administration's been cut over seventeen, almost eighteen percent, just over seventeen percent. So there has been significant cuts in administration over the last four years, over seventeen percent. We've lost assistant principal at Macabin, assistant principal at the high school, and a couple of supervisors spread out across the district in different subjects, as well as testing coordinator. So there has been significant belt tightening for administration in the past four budget cycles. Although our budget, our enrollment is declining, it certainly hasn't declined seventeen point two percent in the last four years. So our administrative cuts have far outstripped our cuts in teachers and certainly have far outstripped our cuts in enrollment as well, so.
Anyone else have any discussion today? Will?
No, no. Okay. I'll just talk loudly. I'm curious when there is a fiscal year 19 adjustment, what does that mean exactly?
What that means is there will be an increase to that line. We're taking numbers from the current year because it depends on, most likely it was, if it's a salary line, we're going into negotiations with just about everyone. So there'll be some kind of an adjustment that way. If it's insurance or something like that, we won't know what the adjustment's going to be quite yet. That usually comes down in April, May, or June, but we have to account for something in the budget because it's not going to be flat that we do.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
With regard to the enrolled, the cuts for the teachers and staff across the board, I know that a lot of parents are concerned about what that does to the class size. Can you give an idea of, you know, still what some of those size schools look like given the cuts, you know, I know enrollment's down, but, you know, are we still looking at different range options?
Some of the cuts at the, the proposed cuts at the elementary level are in grades where there's currently three sections. So you get a monthly enrollment report that's been, those class sizes are divided by three. You would simply just divide that by two, assuming no new students move in or out of that grade, which you usually get some movement, one or two each either way in any school. So if you just look at those classes, if it's forty-six right now or forty-eight and it's three sections of sixteen, it would be two sections of twenty-four or thereabout. So numbers do change between now and September, and if there's any significant change in any one grade, we can adjust on the fly. It's not uncommon to budget for, for example, two kindergartners and then we get a rash of enrollees at one school in August and now we have to add a section. So things are never permanently set until September, but we do have an idea where we're going to be at the elementary levels for sure. At the middle school and high school, we are looking at some teacher cuts. We don't exactly know with departments now. We're still reviewing that data to see where a cut can best be absorbed. So I couldn't say which subject matter that will see an increase in class sizes, but wherever there's a cut, you'll see a commensurate increase in class sizes for that subject matter.
Just to tag on to that, what do you think the max number is right now at the elementary level for, as if it was today?
It's in your books.
Yeah.
It's in the document section.
Is the enrollment number right in the beginning or public?
We have two sections.
In the document section.
Yeah, it's right in the beginning of the book.
There's two sections with three each at Westbrook School yet.
It's under support box.
But everyone else is two sections.
So that number that we're looking at would be the fifty-two, is it be divided by three teachers? By three teachers, okay.
But everyone else would be two teachers.
So we have a guideline, I believe, right?
No kidding. It is very loud.
Current board policy is also there. K to three is twenty-five.
Twenty-one for actual.
Four to twelve is twenty-eight.
Highest twenty-one for-
That's in your book.
Highest twenty-eight Marshall Hill.
Under support box.
So we're well within our guideline.
The highest seems to be fourth grade at Upper Greenwood Lake at twenty-four per class. That's the highest. Most of them are around twenty-one, except for West, no, Westbrook, that's divided by three. So they're around under twenty, twenty or under.
So even with that, because the guideline falls from four to twelve to twenty-eight, right? Am I reading that right? That the max would be twenty-eight and four to twelve is over still?
Yeah, we're good.
Within our guideline. Okay. Terry, did you have, oh, did you run your end?
I was going to ask the same question.
Oh.
Will?
Under the line item that includes grant writing consultants, has the administration ever thought about approaching a grant writing consultant?
Where's that?
We used to have one years ago.
Page one of two in the superintendent's section.
That's an administrative clause that I think a lot of districts have gotten away with. I don't think we ever, I remember having it and I think we hid away with it because-
Most of our teachers are writing their grants.
What say you, Mr. Superintendent?
I have to look at it very quick. Could you say what it is again?
It is the second line item under consultants, improvement of, instruction, grant writing consultant. I was just wondering why we haven't tried that.
We have, we have no money budgeted for that line. That is not a position we currently have in this year's budget or the last couple of years, and we simply can't afford it, to be honest with you. So that's the simple answer.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how much does a grant writing consultant cost?
Nearly ten percent, at least ten percent of what they are able to bring into the district.
So there's no cost? We don't pay them a salary, right? If they don't, if they don't bring anything in, they don't get paid?
It could be. It could be upfront cost and then a percentage.
There was a quote I'm doing, I can't tell you because it's a while ago, but if they, if we research it, you'll, I'm sure Barbara will be back and find out what it was. There was a quote.
Having been said, if, if we could get somebody on contingency like that, why wouldn't we do it? It's, they're finding free money for us. Yes?
We didn't get anybody.
That's the point, but I'm sorry. No one wanted to come. That's- It's a double-edged sword too because a lot of the grants that they, they're able to capture would mean that the board would have to also put some money into it. So if you're getting a grant and you don't have the money set aside in your budget to match whatever is required by that particular grant, it becomes problematic because you won't be able to accept it anyway.
Okay.
A lot of the more competitive grants are that way. They're not going to give you a hundred percent of the monies. We do have a lot, a number of our faculty find out about small grants, you know, and they're able to bring additional funds in for their particular classes that have no matching grant. They have the, you know, some of our teachers have been able to get the target grant and there's been a few other things. The New York Giants grant a couple of years ago, Dr. Over was able to get. So there are things out there that they find out about and they have brought additional monies in, but it's not big hundreds of thousands because that's, most of those competitive grants or non-competitive grants are going to inner-city schools.
Will?
Just as a personal point, I think that that's money well spent if the conclusion is it benefits an educational program, which I believe this is what we're here for. So just my personal tidbit on that.
Glenn?
I have some point of information inquiries for Barbara, just to kind of like get some baseline information. Barbara, what was the excess surplus from last year? Was it two point one? Am I remembering correctly? Two point one million?
Two point four five.
From sixteen, seventeen? For the budget year that just ended?
Yeah.
It was a little over two million dollars. Two million-
It was two, two point four five?
Two million oh something.
Okay. And that was on top of the state mandated two percent that we didn't invade, right? That we, okay.
Right. Percent that the board needs to keep as a reserve.
Right. The two percent reserve. So we didn't touch that. So we're, we had two, a little over two million more than we needed even on top of the state mandated reserve. Do, um, staff development, any, wherever it appears in here, has staff development mixed with other. Is it possible that on whatever next version of the budget we get, we can have those separated?
What do you mean?
Because throughout, throughout the budget, there was, it said, the heading was staff development slash other objects.
Right.
Okay? And there was a, more or two instances where I looked at it and I couldn't tell what was staff development and what might be a teaching tool for a classroom. It looked like there were memberships or something for like maybe fifty students or forty students or something like that. I don't know if that's teachers or students.
Staff.
Okay. Is always staff? Okay, so that's, all right.
If it was instructional, it would be for students.
Well, I saw some other categories where things were mixed in that were kind of strange. Like one of them had postage under staff development?
Postage under staff development?
Yeah, it had postage and, and letters and things, a hundred twenty-five. It was very small, but it was just odd that there were some things mixed in. Where are we on the LGEA energy audit? Because that would maybe pertain to the roof at-
It's not going to be ready for this budget cycle. They started their walkthroughs last week. We have another fourteen days worth of walkthroughs, so it's not going to be done anytime soon.
Okay, because it's been about a year. I didn't think it would take this long. Is that the state or?
It's not us.
Yeah.
So anybody willing's thinking about the next question? Did you have anything?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll chime right in here.
I'd like to reiterate what Ms. Swire had to say about the administration. We didn't really all that long. We started with thirty-seven hundred students. I remember that because it was just about exactly twenty thousand a student. Our total budget, seventy-four million, thirty-seven hundred students, twenty, you know, works out just nice, for some reason I remember that number. So now we're down to thirty-two. Five hundred students.
Excuse me?
That's only in district students. That does not account for any of our other district students.
How many of those are there? Fifty to PCTI and how many?
I mean, we definitely increased the PCTI number, which you probably saw on the budget, to eighty.
About eighty going to PCTI and then you have your other districts that are probably still about sixty.
Sixty, yeah, just about sixty.
Okay, so we lost four hundred students, not five hundred students, in three and a half years that I've been here. So it's fairly substantial and even though I understand that you're, you're making some cuts in some administration, the area to think about, I think, are administrators. So your subject areas, you know, we've got people, and just take a look at, you know, we've got people who are, they're not direct reports, you know. We haven't got somebody who's got people in their office every day, you know, asking for direction and so on and so forth. But, you know, it really makes me wonder, you know, when we talk about, and I wouldn't necessarily do anything at all with science, English, and math, but in the other areas, maybe we can combine some of those and be a little more, with regard to class size, obviously our state mandated numbers are much higher than what we've actually got. I would, and I think the educators know this, we want to be very, very careful with the primary grade. Small class sizes make a huge difference in the primary grade. But as we get older, you know, middle school, high school, we, it's very easy, you can find schools all over the nation that have much larger class sizes and it doesn't seem to matter. A good teacher can teach thirty kids or twenty kids at the high school level or the eighth grade level. Eighth grade is a little tougher, but, so I'm just asking to be sensitive to the age of the children. We need to continue to have small class sizes in the primary grades. Along that line, I've asked you, Mr. Novak, three times for a list of honors classes next to AP classes because I can't think of a single reason why we ought to teach honors chemistry and AP chemistry. It's the same thing. Combine the class, put the kids in there, they'll learn just as much in a curriculum where we have spent, you know, the nation has spent millions of dollars to develop rigorous curriculums and materials for kids that we know, there's just all kinds of evidence that kids who take AP classes, and they are not just for the top of the class or even for that matter for the college prep, when you look at AP classes in inner-city schools and, you know, different environments, the kids learn more. So if we can combine AP classes and honors classes, it's an, it's an opportunity to have larger class sizes and probably have more, more learning, but be extremely sensitive to primary grades. It really matters to young kids having, having direct attention. I had a-
I think the lower numbers is what, for the primary grades is what Dr. Anam was saying.
Yeah, we're trying, so, you know, in fourth grade to go to twenty-four isn't the end of the world, but, you know, primary grades, keeping those classes small, and I don't think we have any of those with more than twenty, but even twenty is, you know, kind of, kind of pushing it. I had a good friend of almost a quarter of a century who died last Friday, and it just sort of reminded me of what's, what's worthwhile in life. And of course, you guys know I've been through some, some issues. And I can tell you that having been through that kind of thing really makes one think about what's important, what we ought to be doing. And I have personally tried to lead my life. I feel it's important to give something back to the, to the community. I think everybody who's on the board obviously feels that way. That's what you're doing. And that's why I'm doing this. I, I want to start with, I think, you know, and I've done lots of things over there. Been a coach, I've been singing in the cathedral choir, you know, just, I'm not going to go through it all too much, but, you know, I think this is really important. There's nothing at all that I personally feel I can do about education at the national level or even at the state level, but I can observe at the national level that the U.S. continues to decline, decline, decline. You know, when, when I was a young man, you know, the U.S. was in the top of the list among our OECD competitors in science and English, and I think in the latest year, we're now twenty-eighth out of thirty-one in math. That's the U.S. Now, I can't do anything about most, most of that, but I think I can help, which is what I'm trying to do, to do something about, about this. My community I care about. And so I'm just trying to say it's important. That's why we're here. It's important. It's really important. If every community did a little better at education, then we wouldn't be twenty-eighth in, in, among, you know, all of our competitors. Yeah, so the first most important thing and why I'm here is to do what I can to make education a little bit better. And I think we're doing a good job. You know, we, kids get great education, but I also think, and we've discussed this behind the scenes, there are areas where we could do better and we need to continue to try. That is our mission. One of the things I'm disappointed about in this particular budget, and I've asked about this for three years, I want to see more things on the budget, on the schedule that are going to help us improve education. And I just don't, I don't see that here, you know.
What do you feel are lacking right now in terms of, like, is there an item here that's not there that you are looking for on this?
Single most important thing that we can do something about is, is math. All right? We have talked about putting a new math program in, and I think that if we're going to do that, we've got to do a great job of professional development. And I don't, you know, I don't necessarily want to have a public discussion about what's wrong with math in, in West Milford, but I'll tell you one thing, I don't think it's the kids. As you have pointed out, Dr. Anam, we have above-average income, well above-average income in West Milford for New Jersey. And I think everybody knows New Jersey is consistently among the top five states in the nation for education. And here we are, above-average income and in the bottom quartile in math performance. These are not stupid kids and I know we have good teachers. I know that. I, I've talked to them. We've got good teachers and good kids. And so frankly, when, you know, which are the two most important determinants of how you're going to do. So to me, that says that the problem is management, starting right here and then right in your lap. We're, we're doing something not right in management. I think it's completely valid to take a look at, at putting in a new program. We know how things weren't the last time we put in a program, and we have got to make sure when we put it in, the teachers have got the training they need. When we put it in last time, they didn't know what they had. They couldn't explain it to the students and they couldn't explain it to the parents. The parents want to have their kids believed. Everybody-
Steve, can I just touch base real quick before passing off to Dan? And I don't know, the last time they put in a new math program that predates me, so I don't even want to touch on that, but, and Dan has my full confidence. He's the best, I'll call him assistant superintendent because that's what he is. He's the best assistant superintendent I've ever worked with or even met in my life. So he's got my full confidence. So there are some budget increases, proposed budget increases in this budget for math, and I think Dan can speak to what costs as far as books, programming, professional development. and I think Dan can speak to what costs, as far as books, programming, professional development, and our vision for implementing this in each, in each school. Okay? Dan?
Yeah. So the last three years, the budget has, the board has supported a significant investment in our staff. And to me, and that's been the philosophy that I have tried to carry in this role, and you've been in full agreement of this, that investing in our staff, in our staff development, is, is what the avenue that we need, need to go. So I'm a little, I'm curious as to what, and I think Mrs. Van Dyke asked a good question, what are you not seeing? Because what you said, and I agree with, is that the textbook isn't the answer. Just dumping a textbook doesn't change how, how professionals teach. So you have supported, and the board has supported, and I've talked at every ed committee meeting for three years about our professional development plans. We've invested significant amounts of time and resources into our professional development. We had a full day today, once again, of a very meaningful approach to professional development. Our biggest investment, as you look in your budget books, is our staff. And our growth in our staff is, is where we need to be focusing. So I disagree. I think there's significant money allocated toward the improvement of teaching and learning. And I think we've seen that, when we presented our, our park scores. And I just say that park is everything, because who knows with, with government changes where that's going to go. But we've seen a rise in scores compared to our peer competition in our local area schools in the areas that we've been focusing on. Those, those primary grades, those grades three through six and seven and eight, where we've really been focusing on those, on those areas, we've, we've seen a rise. So I think we've, we've dedicated a lot of, you know, this, this is the largest professional development budget, I think, that's been around. You know, going back to my time as a principal, we didn't always have local funds dedicated to this purpose. We've, we relied heavily on, on title funds, Title II, which doesn't always make the ends meet when you're talking about professional development. So, and I'm very, you know, this year, we, we recommitted to the idea of the, the auditing of the math program. We've had our professional development trainers who began last year. And going again into this year, we have a five-year plan in place. We're currently in year two of that five-year plan that's, that's being supported by this budget. We are moving towards, we had a presentation today from the new publisher for our math textbook in grades six and seven, which was very well received. It also has, and I don't want to use the word "I excel" too often because it brings different sorts of opinions, but we've got a tool in place, or a potential tool, to look at alternatives at the grade levels where we're implementing this new program. And following on one of your directions, that you didn't ask me three times about, was about looking at GoMath and bringing in a trainer from GoMath to take a look at the actual program we have in place, to take a look at our implementation. So that's a process that we've begun for this spring, and will head into next year, is bringing in individuals from GoMath to see, you know, now we're year four into the implementation of GoMath, and we think we finally have seen the effectiveness of that program, going back to, you know, the, the implementation in the first place. So I think we're at a good point to review GoMath. When we look at other districts who use it, they've been successful. So it might not necessarily be the tool, it might be the process. And I think we're at a good place to review that process before we make a rash decision to abandon GoMath. We see it's effective in other communities, we see it's effective and still being purchased in other communities. So, you know, that's one of the, we want to be very cautious in, in how we proceed. Our staff is, is comfortable with it. They're finally, we're getting the results that we want, especially in fourth and fifth grade, where we've, where we have typically been, been weaker in comparison to our, I don't say rival towns, but our, our, our local area competition. We've, we've shown great, great improvement in that. So I think we're in a good place in that, and I think we, you know, in our budget, have thoughtfully laid that out. You know, it's not just buy a new, you know, buy a new textbook series. That's easy to see in a budget when you spend that much money on textbooks, but that necessarily isn't always the best thing, so.
Mr. Yuman?
Yeah, I'm going to segue right onto that. Steve, I've been a big cheerleader for professional development since I got on the board. Okay? So when I reviewed this, I was looking for professional development. Now, I think that maybe I'm missing something, but from what I could tell, Absua's got $2,000 budgeted for professional development. Maple Road Zero, that's the one that had the postage and supplies under it. Marshall Hill 400, Paradise Knoll 500, UGL 1,500, Westbrook 1,650. As far as I can tell, Mackman has 900 towards speech and 175 toward nursing. West Milford High School is really hard to decipher. But it looked at some point like there's an $80,000 professional development for the English department? And I found under the math supervisors heading, a 13-something thousand dollar heading for professional development. I can't imagine you're spending $13,000 on professional development just for the supervisor. So tell me if that, if that's correct or not. I imagine that that's going to be used for math development in the high school and middle school? What is that?
That sounds a little bit off. So the, the first series of numbers that you referred to, I'm not quite sure where those are coming from. Are those the Title II allocations, Barbara?
It looks like the summary heading.
Well, she's looking for that. I'll just talk about in, in language. So I, I maintain the district budget, which I look for staff development, as you mentioned before, other purchase service. That is in the amount of $98,000.
Come close.
Sorry, future budget, $48,000. That is the central fund where I provide a number of the initiatives that I was just talking about. So we have a large professional development initiative going on in our language arts program in grades three through eight for readers and writers workshop. So that is a significant cost that comes out of a central budget, not necessarily allocated to the building budget. So an individual principal might propose professional development in their local budget if they have a initiative that they're working on in their building. So a particular principal might want to work on mindfulness or, or something along those lines. So they'll build it in their, in their building budget. We budget on a district level for the major initiatives that we are implementing across, across the curriculum in, in all grades. The $80,000 you're referring to in the language arts supervisor, that is in the form of our new phonics program that we are hoping to move into for next year. So we, we have a great need for a multi-sensory approach to the teaching of phonics. And we believe we have found that in the program that we are looking at. We're still in the process of selecting a program. One of the major contenders, so to speak, came in today and presented to our, did a half-day presentation for our staff, so our staff could get a good idea of what that, what that presentation and what those resources look like. We've been doing site visits to schools who've been doing this well, districts that have been doing this well. So it's a very, very thoughtful approach. The budgeting of that is also inclusive of the materials and the training for it. So the training would take place, I think it's three full days of training, if we agree to go with that particular program. So that's, that's what's included in that budget. It's not just PD, it's also the resources and materials that go with it.
Okay, so what is our total professional development budget this year? And what is it proposed for the 2019 year? How much of that is allocated toward the mathematics professional development? And how much of that is in the elementary school? Because that seems to be where we're having the kids start to fall down, is they're, they're getting behind in elementary school. And by the time they get into middle school and high school, they're really struggling.
I think that's a misconstruing of, of the facts. What we've seen is growth in the last three years in our elementary school, what I just referred to in responding to Mr. Drew, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. We have seen, we have seen gains, gains in that regard. A large majority of that professional development has been toward our, our elementary grades. And to be honest with you, I took criticism from Will for that in the past. What are we doing about the middle school and the high school? Because we seem to be, I was accused of funneling, trying to create a better elementary school climate to feed, you know, feed our middle school and, and high school. So I have stayed true to our vision and our goals in trying to build a better, a better-prepared elementary student, so that when they move into fifth, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth, et cetera, they've got the prerequisite skills to, to tackle the things that we're, we're looking for. So I disagree in that, in that assessment.
All right, so going back to the original question, though. How mu, how much do we have budgeted this year and, and in this budget? And how much, what portion of that is allocated toward math professional development?
Well, in the, in the math supervisors' budget, we have our math PD.
There's 13, 13 and change. There's 13 and change under the math supervisors category. I don't know, that's what I'm asking. But I didn't find any, any other math professional development anywhere else.
No, I have. Is this one, $24,000?
Page one?
How many pages? Two or four? Yep. In my 14 account.
The count I'm looking at, Glenn, is 223, 390. That is a cut of $50,000, which is equal to our Title II-A offset. Title II-A is federal money.
Can you tell me what page that's on?
It's under, it's under the education office. And if you go to page two of four.
Thank you.
So it was $98,000 last year, it's $48,000 this year. And that $50,000 offset is going to be our Title II-A, which is federal money. So we're going to be spending more than 48, it's just we get 50 back from the, not back from the, but that's offset by our Title II-A money, which is our federal. Roughly, yeah. I mean, and some of our PD is spread out in this book. Some would be listed under Absua, some would be listed under high school, some would be listed under English Supervisor, some would be listed under Dan's budget. So we'd have to go through this budget, Glenn, and add up every one of those columns to see exact, but.
Well, I don't need exact, a ballpark, I mean, 10%, 20%, you know?
I'll, I'll give you a ballpark of our budget. Our budget is up-
For mathematics?
Our budget, overall budget is up 1.25%. So when you see large increases, it's typically a small budget line. So if we spent $500 for something last year, and this year we spent 600, it's a 20% increase, it jumped off the page, but it's a, it's a, it's a law of large, or the law of small numbers.
That's not answering the question. All right? How much of the money that we have budgeted are we planning on spending on mathematics instruction for staff development?
I'd have to go back and-
Well, I have a, I have a-
That'd be one of the questions.
I have a proposed justification of $24,500.
Okay. Out of 98.
I mean, we, we, there's going to be questions that should be answered.
Big chunk.
That are going to be asked tonight. And they're not going to have the answers for it.
But that's not inclusive.
I know, but I got it sideways.
But that's, that $24,500 is not inclusive of the sixth and seventh grade new textbook and the training that goes for that. So as Dr. Anamond said, you find it in a lot of different places. So there's, that's just the pool for us to bring in a consultant to work with the grade levels as part of that five-year plan. So that's just toward the five-year plan.
Okay.
Which, like I said, we just, we're in the middle of year two towards that five-year plan. The other monies allocated, et cetera, are in different locations. The Glenn Co. training, the GoMath training, those are, those are in other areas.
And the $13,000 under the supervisors' category, is that included in those numbers?
Can you tell me, can you tell me what page that's on?
You know, I'm not sure. I have, I'm not sure I wrote it down.
Why don't we, why don't we direct the board, why don't, why don't we direct the administration to come back with us with the numbers that you're adding?
Yeah, that sounds good.
This book is-
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not easy to read.
Could potentially be-
It's easier to go through it and to use it if you're looking for. And if there's other questions, that's what we should be doing, is forming those questions, so that this way the administration can answer our questions. But if we could do them before we're sitting here, it probably would be helpful.
Okay. I'll try and find that before we leave, Ken.
May I ask Mr. Seidowitz a question? It's because he's liaison to the town.
Oh, okay.
Will, has there any, has there been any discussion on the budget for the township and what the increase would be?
Last I heard, some of their aims, I haven't had a sit-down meeting, I'm still arranging that, but last I heard through the grapevine is they are aiming for another 0%. Whether or not they get there is, we'll see in the future.
All right. Thank you. Will?
Mr. Novak, I never accused you of not listening, that's for sure. So I imagine that you are the coordinator of education services, correct? This is a good thing, don't worry. For the AP testing student cost offset program, thank you. I think that it's what I think it is, I know we have discussions about that before, that is a, a great step, especially for those who can't afford to take an AP test. So I appreciate that. I'd like to jump to the business office section, page one, the first line item for legal services.
Yes, you're in trouble.
No, definitely not.
No, you're down.
I'm no longer in the summer room, definitely within the, the line items. For environmental, would that be something that you could explain?
Is this page one, Will?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page one, the first line item.
Environmental, that's the one you have Mr. Conway come in? That's our environmental attorney.
Okay.
So we don't know what's going to happen between now and June of 2019. So we very well might need his services at some point.
Very well. Some of these are just my curiosity, because it's very difficult to go through a several hundred-page book. I'd like to jump to page four of 11, same section, in the suppliers' copier section. That line item, I was curious as to why it's funded to that amount, seeing as the orders haven't reached beyond $6,000
There's no increase.
in the past five years. If you don't have an answer now, that's okay. I just wanted to-
Years of history here. There's only a couple of years.
I, I've seen beyond that in a spreadsheet that is inclusive of beyond five years, though.
Okay, so we're budgeting no change to that budget line. We're proposing no change to the suppliers' copier line on page four of 11, $12,500?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's a no change from last year. We don't have our bills and orders in for this year yet.
Do you foresee reaching beyond the, the most recent is 5,000 plus being spent in that item?
Where's he getting there? This? For the paper?
This is where he is.
Yeah, that's where he is.
The extension?
Will, what, what is the question that you want answered?
Why funded to nearly double what is normally spent in that line item?
It's not. It's the same.
It's not the same. The orders, look at the orders, that's how much we spent in that year. And within those years, we don't spend more than, we spend under $6,000 every year.
It's just under four, et cetera.
We'd have to look at the current orders to see how much we're going to spend this year before we can answer that. I, I don't have that in front of me. We would have to look at that budget line if we get back to the office, I suppose.
This is what we budgeted last year, too.
Correct, correct.
Right, and you never know how much is going to go off the paper.
But the point is that it's just likely it's going to be over five or six.
When the prices are going to increase. Mr. Drew?
No. No. I think we're doing many of the right things in math. I didn't mean to say that we're not. What I've asked for three times has nothing to do with GoMath. It's a list, and you've misunderstood the question as apparently I have got. A list of honors classes and AP classes, side by side, so we can sort of see where there might be some room for, for combination. I think you're doing many of the right things that you need to do, and I'm happy to see that in particular in math. But we're not there.
What you're saying is there are two different items that you're talking about. You're talking about-
A list of honors and AP classes.
That's what you want. That's the question.
That's what I want, yes.
Do you understand that?
The.
I understood that clearly.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of, one of the things that's disappointing about this, and I know the town is trying to go with zero percent, three and a half percent increase, honestly, is disappointing. Taxes shouldn't matter. In ten states that are either losing population or increasing population, the least, New Jersey is among those, we're not the worst. Illinois and Wyoming are actually losing population. When you look at who's losing and who's winning, we're losing. The mistakes that are winning are Texas, Florida, Nevada, Washington. It's not just a question of weather. New Hampshire.
Question of everything.
And the one thing that many of these states have in common, Texas, Florida, Nevada, Washington all have zero income. They have lower taxes. The state that's winning is Arizona. They have, you know, North Carolina, we all know, retired in North Carolina. They have lower income taxes, they don't tax social security and retirement income, they have lower property taxes, et cetera.
Crazy.
We can't change that here. We'd like to, but we can't.
But what we can't do is how we do with other towns in New Jersey. We can make this a place where families want to move. And two things we are probably the most important in math is the quality of education and taxes. Come back with the three and a half percent tax increases, it's just clogged. I go talk to people, and they say, you know, what do we need to do unless and else? We don't sit and do things at the top of the list that nobody would mind paying more if, if we had better students in our schools. Not that we have bad performance, but if we had New Orleans and Ridgewood or Aguirre Cliffs or Mountain Lake, you'd have people moving in here like crazy. And they would buy these taxes.
I think our three and a half percent, what you're talking about right now, is our starting point, correct? We're not there yet.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not where we are. Unfortunately, for our, unfortunately for the state of New Jersey at this point, no one knows what their state aid is going to be. They don't know what's going to be cut, we don't know what.
Very much.
You know.
Politically impossible to lower your school funding by a substantial amount. Obviously, we had lower school funding this year, but by twenty thousand dollars out of twenty million.
Well, what, what if it's a hundred thousand this time, instead of twenty thousand?
Well, and we'll wait and see.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think that that's part of, part of the picture that we don't have here.
It's a relatively small piece of the three and a half percent.
And the districts that you were talking about, like Bridgewood and those, what was their increase over the last three years? Do you know if they increased their, their tax rate of?
No, I don't.
I would say that they went up more than zero percent, like we did.
Probably.
So that's one of, that's one of the problems.
I would like to discuss some specific areas.
You know, that we might be looking at right now.
I have, well, the whole state is losing students. You guys.
Well, the whole state's losing everybody.
It's, we're not losing population, but I think, you know, the people and family are getting married later, they're starting families later, and they're having fewer kids. And we are absolutely, the entire state is.
If they have kids.
So I like to win the ones that they're having.
Mm-hmm.
Some specific areas, I remember we talked about this before. In twenty sixteen, fifteen, we budgeted one point three million more than these. And twenty seventeen, we budgeted eight hundred thousand more than we spent. And again, we've got that number going, and, and we've discussed part of why, and I understand that, that we get a contribution back that offsets that, but for some reason, that never goes into the budget. So when I look at, at what we're probably doing for this year, again, we're budgeting somewhere around probably nine hundred thousand to a million more than we're actually going to spend after we take the budget. We don't know the amount exactly, because we haven't got the numbers yet. But for the last three years, we have budgeted almost a million dollars more than we spend, and it looks to me like we're doing it again. Now, that's a real dollar. There's, there's no question. There's another, I guess I don't understand, there's an item on the budget, technology, electricity, that, that jumped a lot. I can give you the actual account on here in a second. It ends in five, 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 zero, and it is in area seventy-five. I think that's how most of your budget. So I don't know which tab in the book it is, but you've got.
Okay.
This, I think, is area seven, seventy-five.
Yeah. Fifty-five. What?
And I'm showing that, that that has, the budget is around.
Is this it?
You know, jumped by a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's gone up by a hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, fifty-one hundred tech services. That's, if you look at the description, it's for the core switch replacement, so it's for the infrastructure, for technology. It's for the telephone system. It's for the cabling that goes along with the telephone system. I, I think that we've had a conversation about how these items are necessary to be replaced, and we have to start with the core switch, which hasn't been replaced in about six years. So the infrastructure.
When we had the jump in telephone, communication telephone, that's completely separate?
Yes.
And then this.
Yeah, so certain areas are increasing in tech services, but others are decreasing, because we had to buy the core switch, because the ones we have now are nearing end of life. If you just go to the back page, page two of two, you're going to see an account summary, a total for report, and there's an increase in that tech services of one point one-one percent. So it's virtually flat from last year. It's actually pretty much even with our total budget increase.
Also looking at going to VOIP in here instead of having our own.
We are investigating similar, those solutions now.
It's going to be a cheaper bill than.
But we have to get there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there may be some cost savings, but there, it may cost you money upfront for some additional cost savings.
And this is all done through a three-year lease purchase, because we can't fund it totally in one year. So these costs will be spread out over a three-year period.
That, that money there will be spread out over three years, or that already is spread?
That's one-third.
That's a third.
Okay, all right. When I look at the.
Not the total amount, but a, a portion of that will be spread out over three years.
Operations, we have in operations, one point three million for the roof replacement. Is the kind of offset to that, is the offset of state funding of that, or what is?
Yes.
One point three million in one year, or is that three years?
No, that's.
That's the Maple Road roof, Barbara.
Roof replacement?
Yeah.
There was one point three million budgeted originally, and what I did is I reduced the scope of that project by three hundred sixty-seven thousand. So right now, we have about nine hundred fifty thousand budgeted for roof replacement. Thank you.
All right, so is that going to be all three sections, or?
We're, we'll definitely try to get as much done as possible. It'll be section one, and then we'll have add alternates on the, on the bid, so that if the price comes in really good, then we could do some additional sections and possibly the whole thing. We were really fortunate with the roof replacement at the high school and the middle school. We weren't that successful, though, with Marshall Hill and Westbrook when we did those roofs, because we do them off-season. If you tried to do them in the summertime, it's, it's prohibitive.
Yeah.
So we weren't as successful. And quite honestly, even the roof replacement at the high school and the middle school, the budget, the, the next closest bidder was a million dollars more than what we ended up spending. So it's always based upon how much work they have when they bid on the project.
Do we get any, we got some state, some area for the other roof, and do we get any here?
No, you won't get anything here. You'll only get a portion of your money's back if you have a referendum.
All right.
So you have to have debt service in order to get the forty percent. If you have no debt service, if you don't go out to a referendum and have the voters approve it, then you get no debt service.
All right. There are a couple of other items in the same section. This is in operations and page, page, page. You've got the bleachers on there, and you're offsetting that with a lease purchase, is that correct?
Yeah.
So three-quarters of a million for the bleachers, and then we're offsetting that because we're paying only for one year. Is that correct?
Right, you, you would offset the cost by, like, you would divide it out over five years.
We've got the additional fieldhouse money over the hundred thousand we've already deployed.
Right.
Or that we've already budgeted, I'm sorry. The architecture and engineering there, fifty thousand, is for what?
The bleachers.
For the bleachers.
Right.
That was one of my questions.
I think it's the roof replacement.
On that, same category. I see ninety-two thousand for paving, plus another four thousand for striping.
That was removed. That was removed. There's no cost.
So you're taking that out now?
Yeah, you could see that there's no money budgeted. That was what the proposals were, but we removed it.
Okay.
When you look at the other column.
All right, no, that's fine. I didn't understand that.
Yeah, knew that I, thank you.
Okay, good. I guess I agree with that.
Glenn, did you have a question that you were?
No, I see you, I have a list, and they, and just answered two of them, so.
Oh, well, that's.
Now, since we're under operations, obviously, we had the tragic events in Parkland, Florida last week, which gives us, we also had a school security meeting, coincidentally scheduled for the next day, the fifteenth, which is on our agenda for a while. And after the meeting, we did discuss, maybe it's time for a comprehensive review of all of our, our physical plants, our schools, our board office. We do have monthly or quarterly school security meetings with our team, representatives of each school. Each school has a plan in place, what to do in the event of a bomb scare, a shelter in place, a lockdown, et cetera. We do train monthly. So we're ahead of many other states. If you read some of the articles coming out since last Wednesday, there's a lot, there's a lot of chatter in other states about doing what New Jersey's been doing for the last six or seven or eight years, however long it's been, with monthly security drills. So we are well ahead of the curve. I think that was part of the issue in some of these communities, is that they've never dealt with any kind of drills or any kind of occurrences like we do. Nevertheless, there's only, there's limits to what drills can do. I think it's time, perhaps, we take a look at our physical schools to see, is there anything we can do to make them safer? Now, I would imagine, more often than not, some of these things are real low-cost, no-cost initiatives, such as reminding our parents not to hold the door for somebody coming in behind them, things of that nature. There are other things that would cost money, significant amounts of money, money we certainly can't absorb in any one-year school budget. So I would suggest, in committee and with the administrative team, we begin discussions to see what we can do in a more comprehensive manner. And this is going to lead to some other budget questions down the road, whether it be a referendum of sorts for school security. At some point down the road, it's something we need to at least consider and discuss with some security experts and some minor architects to see, what do they recommend?
Mr. Balling.
Well, thank you, Mr. Balling. Doc, tremendous. As a follow-up, I too could applaud myself as a private citizen and as a person who's pretty tuned in to who is actually in West Milford. We are lucky enough to have several residents who are principals heavily involved with a major security firm, which we use here in West Milford, and they are.
Easy to.
Winner. These are West Milford residents, they actually went through, they live here in West Milford, they went to West Milford schools and what have you. I'll give you the man's name tomorrow when I call you. But he said, Greg, and I have another relationship with the guy, that's beside the point, we're friends. I'd be more than willing to participate in these discussions. And yes, everything comes with a price. However, given the current.
Climate?
Exactly, climate. There is nobody in this room or this town that would turn a deaf ear or a blind eye to any type of a tax hit, if you will, if we were going towards making these places more safe, more secure. I know it's easier said than done. Typically, what happens, as we all know, this is a hot-button issue, and I hope it continues to get hotter, but in time, they do fade away. That seems to be human nature, sadly. However, it behooves us at this time to be a leader and to show the way and to turn over every rock we can, so that people truly are looking at West Milford, you know, when it comes to this kind of thing, as a leader. I can think of no better thing to be a leader in, right here in February of 2018. And my point is, we all agree on that. This is, this is a big announcement. But we're, we're ahead of it already, because we have West Milford people. This is their business. And they can't wait to, you know, come in, speak, have these consultants help draft the specifications, because this is all going to be bit work. But I think we need to take advantage of this type of thing. And they're ready to go. I just got to call them, you just got to meet with them, and it's, I, I think it should be number one on the top of the list tonight.
I agree.
Given the fact that, you know, we have people, educators. It's a more dangerous line of work all of a sudden than what, you know, fill in the bike others do. It just does not make any sense. And we can do more in West Milford, and we have that opportunity to do it. Just let me know when and where you want to meet, and when you want those guys to be here.
We, we did discuss just that, maybe something will come through budget and finance coming in March, so that we can have some of this discussion.
The sooner, the sooner the better, Ms. Linda.
Coming up, so.
We have it on our agenda for budget finance in a couple of weeks.
My offer is for these West Milford people to talk to you directly when you want to talk to them, and they have some ideas, simple steps that we can take right now to make everything more sustainable.
Well.
To carry on this conversation, last year in budget and finance committee, after I went to NJ SBA school security conference, a firm came in to demonstrate a lockout system and a communication system, because the, the administration was looking towards replacing their outdated infrastructure, and I felt it was killing two birds with one stone. And perhaps we can have them present themselves here to the full board. That way, we could even at the very least have an idea of what type of systems are out there. So perhaps maybe we could do something like that.
We'll, we'll look into it as far as for the budget. I don't know what was looked into last year.
I can send you the.
Maybe if we can get that information out, we can look at that, too.
And on the same topic, I know that in the past, we've had officers in the schools, I don't remember what they were called, the resource officers?
Resource officer.
Resource officers? Maybe Terry could tell us how, what they did and how they, that worked.
Well, I think that's a budget item that's for the police officers that they don't have anymore.
Right, that's why we have to talk about it, so that we know whether to budget something for it.
Well, I mean, no, it's, it's something that they don't offer.
Oh.
The town won't pay for it anymore. That's why we lost them.
That's how we lost them to begin with.
But I, I would, I would even say that we should increase the security guards at the high school and at Mcapin. I would like to see that. I think the guys that are working and the women that are working are overburdened right now, and I think, you know, having that third eye might not be such a bad thing. But again, it would cost money. So I don't know.
I mean, I, we, we are fortunate in West Milford that our three security guards that are in our high school and our middle school are retired police officers. our high school and our middle school are retired police officers. So, you know, in some, it's not a hired agency that's in there. But Terry is correct. We need, you know, and let's face it, until something happens, people don't really identify. There probably are people in the community right now that don't have any idea that we even have those three security guards in the, in the schools. Because I've read some stuff that made me think, well, I don't think you've ever been in the building then, you know? But I, and, and maybe it's a good thing that they, they don't realize that they're there, but, you know, they do things that we probably don't know about. But you're right, we need to look into the resource office. I think that's probably gone away in a lot of places other than the interstates.
Maybe we could approach the police, police department and the council.
You'd probably have to approach the council to change the budget.
There you go.
I mean, we can certainly.
There goes that zero.
We can certainly, we can certainly make requests as, as a board of the council to consider and see if they can manage something.
I totally agree. Any other discussions? Anybody have anything else on budget and?
Oh, yeah.
Questions, more questions?
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Okay. I'm sorry, Will.
No, I.
No, go ahead. It's fine. We'll get to it soon.
I have a lot of turns, so it's okay to pass them off. There, under the operations budget on page two, under repair and maintenance, I'm going to talk about items in this line item.
What page?
Two.
It's page two, starting on page two. There are roof repairs for PK, Apshua, and UGL. I was wondering if we're close to needing to replace any of those roofs? And you can say, I don't know.
I don't understand, no. From what I've said, from what I've been told, it's not at this point.
Okay.
Do those repairs are the nature of a flat roof?
Yeah, I mean, you, you watch, I think one of the other schools might have some move to or partial.
Probably, Apshua.
PK is relatively new. I think that was like 13 years or so. You just have to keep up with the, the flashings and things like that so that it doesn't get worse. So that's just normal repairs that we do.
Okay, thank you. May I run with the ball? I'll try to be as quick as possible. Thank you. For asbestos abatement, I just feel that, perhaps that this board can figure out a way to maybe get as close to 100% abated as possible if there's any possibility of doing a large-scale project, may not be in this budget cycle, but perhaps in the next one where a full inventory of any of the buildings that need abatement are put together and we do put out a referendum to, once and for all, take care of an asbestos problem that's been here since the beginning of these buildings.
Well, don't say that we have an asbestos problem.
Well, I'm sorry. Any, any issue that may be in the district that can be taken care of, perhaps we can take a comprehensive approach to asbestos abating.
I think what you need to recognize is that most items that might contain asbestos are contained, and, and there's no really, real reason to, to abate them. We do have a couple areas and they're being addressed. We have, our asbestos plant is monitored over six months. We have our walkthroughs every, every six months they come through. Every three years, they do a comprehensive walkthrough. So that's all taken care of.
Is there a report generated from that?
Yes, absolutely. It's in every building.
Do we have any unencapsulated asbestos?
I couldn't answer that. I can tell you, though, that there are some areas that need to be abated and we're going to take care of it.
When you say abated, when you say abated, does it mean removed?
Yeah, because the kids are putting holes in the roof tile, the ceiling tiles. So when they, when they poke holes in the ceiling tiles, it's loosening things up, so we have to abate that. So.
So it's probably not encapsulated underneath that?
Well, it's, no, it's the tiles themselves.
Oh, it's the tiles themselves?
If it's damaged stuff, then you have to deal with the floor.
You haven't known.
But that is, that is also included to do some repairing, abatement at Macapin School.
Okay. On high school, page six, down at the bottom, we have $100,000 for kitchen equipment. That was removed, right? Just want to confirm that? We have zero in, in the budget for that? I see. Page six, high, high school?
Page six, F29.
Kitchen equipment?
I think.
That's zero, right?
Basically.
The very bottom line, very bottom line.
Oh, there it is. Okay, that's a good hole.
Mr. Gorski, when he prepares his budget, also puts a list of things that he would like to bring our attention to. And so the kitchen equipment is just something that he's indicating he would love to have his kitchen renovated.
Okay.
And it will be around $100,000.
That's his kitchen wishlist, I got it. Okay. And same place, page four? Same thing, same thing with the exterior windows, that's, that's another wishlist item? It's toward the bottom, $34,000? Okay, so that's not an issue then, right?
So that, in future budgets, we can keep an eye on this.
Basically, he brings those things to our attention.
Okay, so just making sure that I understood that.
You know, I have a question.
But, you know, with this kitchen equipment, if we were to renovate, maybe we could bring our own ladies in and get a dietitian and not rely so much on Pup Tony.
Is it kitchen equipment or is the kitchen home ec the?
No, home ec was done.
Home ec was done. It's a nice kitchen.
Home ec was done a number of years ago. This is the cafeteria equipment, but I think, I think because of the changes in the laws over the last six years, the dietitian is not going to make a difference.
I, I, what responsibility does the vendor have as far as the equipment?
They can't have any, it's our equipment.
So there's no, it's up to us to maintain it and replace it?
If something breaks, we have to replace it or repair it. Yeah, they, they can't use that as an incentive to be here. So they can't say, if you hire this, the vendor, I'll put in $100,000. We're getting, that's, you can't do that. It's a responsibility.
On the same page, a wrestling mat hoist for $18,750? I have to admit, I don't know anything about wrestling mat hoists, so maybe you could enlighten me. Same page, same page, page four.
We have very limited space, very limited space. Right now, this is wrestling season, you have regens this weekend. So, so they have to, if they're, they're borrowing mats or if they're storing their own mat, they have to put it up on a rack and they have to move it into a vestal.
Just gets it off the ground. It's easier to transition from wrestling to basketball.
They can't pick them up. They have to mold, and then they have to go on a, on a dolly and they have to be moved.
So it's.
So this is a hoist.
And they keep these mats in gyms?
The hoist that gets it off the floor, rolled up and gets it off the floor.
So they take up space on the gym floor?
All right. So we can transition from sport to sport.
So what is this, something that kind of hoists it up to the ceiling level?
Yeah.
Not that high, but off the ground.
Off the ground and against the wall.
Does anyone have any more questions?
Basically, because we're limited with space.
Right.
Okay. Will?
Yes, I'm going to write all of my last three. Operations, page three.
What's that?
Are so able to accept LED lights?
I don't think so.
Yeah, but you have to have a vendor come in to take care of it, and that's what it is.
The Westbrook Media Center flooring, carpet tile, VCT, that here? What's wrong with it?
Say that again? What are we looking at?
Some of the carpet is.
Media Center carpet.
This is an annual, this is a regularly scheduled carpet upgrade that we roll out every year, one school. It's Westbrook, next year it's Macapin, the next year it's, it just gets dirty over time.
I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with this.
That's a lot of money, $60,000.
Can't, can't we do something we really need with that?
It gets a lot of use. I think, if you take a closer look, it's a little bit beat up.
Even if we got three smart boards, it would be better use to promote education.
Do we know the last time this was replaced?
Doesn't matter.
Top of my head, we'd have to look into when, Mr. Guarino asked when's the last time this has been replaced?
Not my lifetime here, so it's been quite some time. We had some issues with it a few years ago when we had the roof replaced and it was.
So there's probably mold under it.
We had, if you recall, at one time, Westbrook School had old carpet in the hallways, and we did pull that up and put old tile into the hallways so that it was easier to clean and it just looked a lot better.
The new carpets typically are carpet squares, tiles, so if there is a stain, like there's one right there, you would just take that.
Place a square.
Tile up and put a new square down, buy a couple extra like that.
My office, even in HD, they don't see that. So, last question is about the Marshall Hill, which is a closed field. Now, I, I made a December recreation advisory liaison report, and one of the things that was brought up was the Marshall Hill field with their inadequate fencing for games, and I got jumped on, not literally, but figuratively, I was jumped on. We were told that it was already done.
Apparently, there's two fields. I didn't know that.
Well, there's a softball field that.
We did do one.
That counts.
We did do one.
So one was done, the other, okay.
Yeah.
So we were.
At Marshall Hill?
Should have only been half jumped on.
In the back.
Yeah, you put the new fence in the back, backstop and all that, you need that, that there are issues with the backstop and clay and.
But that, the issues were from the men softball?
Yes. You said it was crawling or something?
It's, right.
I know, so we did, we did do some work, and at that time, I thought that, I couldn't imagine why it was, they were still complaining about it, but then I found out that there was another area that needed to be addressed.
Does the school use the field back there?
I believe so.
Terry, what is actually underneath this carpet?
Ooh, I don't want to know.
Doesn't feel like padding.
It feels like a slab, but we won't know until we.
It's just slab.
I, I, it feels like a slab, but we won't know until we rip it up.
Would it be, would it be more economical down the road to just rip it out and put tiling in? And, I mean, that, that would be more lasting than the carpeting, wouldn't it?
Tile cracks.
Tile cracks?
Yeah, and you get, the grout has, yeah, it's not necessarily.
The new tile, carpet tile, don't?
They're squares.
Well, that's what these are. That's what this is.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I just thought it might be more down the line.
You're talking about the same thing, just with carpet. So you pull up a square and put another one down, it's okay.
Anyone else? Yeah. I guess this would be for Alex. Do any administrators other than you get merit incentives?
Yes.
Not in this budget.
Not in this budget.
Okay. In that case, I have to ask, personnel, page eight. Where the heck is it? There it is. The FY19 adjustment, as far as I can tell, this is the only positive FY19 adjustment where it adds money instead of subtracting it in, in this whole book, because I, at least that I saw.
No, there's a lot.
There's a lot of them, okay. Well, this $10,000 that we're adding, what is that for? Because we know the salaries, right?
These salaries here are current salaries. Come July, you're giving them new cra, new contracts.
Okay, for raises. So it's for raises?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara, the request for interest, the RFI for Hillcrest, what's our status on that?
It's in the newspaper. We requested a return date of February 28th.
Okay. When, when, did that go out? How many times did we give them?
It's been out for about three weeks.
Okay, great. And do we have anything in this book at all for carrying costs on Hillcrest?
No, we're, right now, we're absorbing it in our operations budget.
Okay.
On page eight of 50, under personnel again, why is there so much overtime? I mean, I know we added an extra secretary last year, and I just don't understand why there's so much.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dwyer, where, what?
Page eight of 50, underneath salary, secretary and clerical overtime. Why is there so much overtime at the board office for that? I know it's not a lot, it's $1,000, but I'm just.
It's because it went up 100%.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't.
You know, there might be times when we have to keep the staff, you know, to do special projects or something.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to spend the money, but if it's there, we need it.
I know, I'm just curious.
And we really avoid it at all costs.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else?
Barbara, what portion of the $750,000 for the bleachers and press box is the press box? I'm assuming the architectural stuff has, is mainly for the press box, not the bleachers? Because that's, that's a unit, right?
The architectural stuff has to be for the entire project, because it has to be submitted to the Department of Education.
Oh, all right.
So it has to be, you have to come up with educational specifications, and there has to be an application that gets submitted to the Department of Education for them to approve putting the bleachers in.
And how much, how much of the $750 is for the press box? And, and what are we doing to that?
It'll be part of, it's part of the.
Is it a repair or full replacement?
No, it's part of the new bleachers.
Oh, it's going to be attached? It's going to be attached?
Yeah, the new press boxes are, are accessed through the bleachers.
Oh, okay, so it's a single unit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is attached to bleachers.
Now, the cost makes more sense. Thank you.
The bleachers are a tough one to swallow, I understand, but this, this is something that has been waiting, has been on the back burner for way too long.
I had understood the bleachers usually cost around $500,000, $600,000, something like that. When it's, it's all $750. Now, having a press box attached to it kind of explains.
The whole thing.
The, the, the higher number.
One of the positives out of the new bleachers is going to be that our, our band, other, other entities in the town, we will be able to host something there. Now, we can't invite anyone here because we don't have the ability to see anyone there.
It's money.
And it's going to gen, right, exactly. It's going to generate revenue.
I think from a safety perspective, we really need to, we really need to do a look at the bleachers, and that's important. That having been said, you know, with these big, the biggest numbers seem to be for things that are not going to promote academic education, which is our primary mandate, according to the New Jersey School Boards Association. So, you know, I just, I understand we have to do this, it needs to be done, we don't want anybody getting hurt.
We want to be sitting at graduation.
But, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking carefully at the big numbers because, you know, anything, if there's anything we can save on the big numbers like that, we can put toward actual education.
I think it is. Having been a board member for 12 years and having to, you know, being a parent for a lot of years.
Where? Where?
Where?
Yeah, where?
Where she lives.
In Bloomfield.
Okay.
Anyway.
There's a big difference.
The extracurricular components, which, you know, the field and bleachers are, are part and parcel for improving your academic program.
Absolutely.
So I think that's really incumbent that everybody understand that they go hand in hand, you can't segregate them.
Right.
If you want to have a, a well-rounded program, you need to be able to give them things outside of the classroom, because that's what keeps kids in the classroom and keeps them focused.
Mr. Bailey?
Ditto. That's right. And to sit here and enunciate or talk about that, there's less or no educational value to those programs that that complex houses athletic events.
That's not what was said.
Excuse me. Athletic event. Fan competitions, what have you. It's just not correct. Furthermore, we have kind of looked the other way on that complex, purely for regeneration. So what we have there is a phenomenal setting, first of all. A complex that's sorely in need of some improvements, specifically the bleachers and the field house. And yes, we could push it off to 2019 and then in 19 we could push off to 20, but the time to do all of this is now, because we've literally pushed it off for many, many years. Furthermore, it hosts two of the biggest, best events that happened in West Milford twice a year. High school graduation, which against that backdrop with the bagpipers and, you know, all that kind of stuff, is like, it's phenomenal. You should be proud of that. And to have Grandma and Grandpa come with no ADA accessibility, not the proper platform for audio visual, you know, filming, you know, that with that broken down press box that's been there for literally 50 years, we're crazy not to fix it. That's event number one. Event number two, finally they've come to their senses and they're coming back. There is nothing better in West Milford in the middle of summer than...
The fireworks, yep.
The fireworks.
Yeah.
So people come here and yes, everybody talks here about the taxes are going up. I'm voting yes, that's why I'm going to participate. I've always voted yes. I want my taxes to go up, but at least I want my tax dollars to be targeted towards nice things, which is a good set of bleachers to watch graduation, to watch the fireworks. I don't think that's asking too much. And if you, I know this works, if you give the people what they want, they're going to support your programs. And we may be able to attract people to move into West Milford. I hear this talk about flight out of West Milford. I don't know if that's...
That's not true.
...our job as a board. But I know our job is to take every penny, spend it wisely, keep an eye on you and the administrative team, and get some things done around here, like a wish list that we've wanted to do forever. Nobody wheels their wrestling mats out on a dolly like we do in West Milford. They hit a button and they walk to the ceiling. I know, I'm in a lot of gyms. As an example, and it's the same thing here, and to take this money, and somebody mentioned it before, it might have been you, we only have like the best marching band in the entire state. When I go all over the place in football season, oh, Mr. Bailey, you're from West Milford. You know what they say to me?
What a band.
Nothing about Dr. Anamont. What do they say? In Randolph, in these places where they have these band contests that are like, it's like Woodstock at those things, you can't even get in.
No.
And why can't we do it here? It's not because Dr. McLaughlin can't figure it out, he can figure it out. It's not because we don't have a band, it's because we don't have the, not the setting, we don't have the facilities, the upgraded facilities. So there would be another phenomenal event we could do around here. And if you give the taxpayer in West Milford what they want, they're going to support the board, they're going to support the team, and they're definitely going to reelect Mr. Bailey back to office in November. And that's what they do, because that's what I'm for. Nice things for West Milford, like they have in other towns. And the bleachers are a nice thing, the field house is a nice thing, and we need it.
And I have a good account.
Sir?
I have a good account this past autumn on a Friday night at a football game at another location, somebody asked you about me and you put in a good word for me. I had that.
I was in Essex County, actually.
Yeah, I, I'd like to segue off of what Mr. Bailey was talking about and ask Barbara, one of the possibilities of, instead of financing these things the way we're doing it, is doing a bond issue, because we also, pretty soon, need to redo the turf field.
You're not going to get any money back on the ground for the bleachers.
You can't get it on the turf field either.
No.
No.
Education...
Only on actual, you can get it on building improvement, so if we want to do it for a roof...
Okay.
Or another classroom that we're going to put on, you can get it for that, but not on turf field or...
Not on essential things like athletic field.
Okay.
Go ahead, Will.
And, and right now, we're leasing, you know, we, we did, we're doing what we can by at least purchasing it and paying it out above your plan.
Okay.
So I'm out of questions, so I just have a couple closing remarks. I don't disagree with the tax increase. I think that, I know the starting point is three and a half percent, and I do hope to see that there are cuts made to that three and a half percent and are presented shortly, especially seeing as the township is having decreasing numbers. It's not a flight, but it is dramatically decreasing, and I think we're all fully aware of that. I think that it's important that we perhaps, down the line, take upon a demographic study as, as, as much emotion as it stirs, I think it's our priority to do so, and hopefully at some point, the board supports that. And number three, I'm reiterating the fact that I believe in my heart of hearts that the board truly does need a prioritized list of capital needs so we can provide input as well. And not for the sake of saying, you can't have that, you can't have that, but I feel that we have so much to offer as board members and that a list that shows that your science labs are in there, your turf field is in there, and things that we may not have seen or the administration may not have seen, that type of input, I feel, is what the board's role is, and I hope to see that at some point in the future.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
What?
Anybody else?
I, I...
Anybody else first? Steve, go ahead, let Steve go first.
Good question on the bleachers, are the, because I haven't seen any plans for this. Are we going to raise them so that the first...
Oh, absolutely.
First couple of rows are usable?
Yeah.
You can't buy them any other way now.
Yeah, they have to be, because they have to be ADA-able.
If I can, from everything I can see, looking at statistics, we have no flight movement into West Milford, either what? In 1990, there were 25,900 people in West Milford, and today there are 26,000 people. It's gone up or down by maybe 100, 30 years. What we do have is property values go up or down depending on whether more people are trying to sell homes versus buy homes. They are going up slightly, so, and we have reduced the inventory of foreclosures and unsold homes in town substantially over the last five years. But it's, you know, we've got 10,000 properties, some of which are commercial and some of which are residential. We've had that for 30 years. We've got 26,000 people and we've had that for 30 years. It's just, and I do know, you know, that, that people absolutely make decisions based on schools and taxes, so we do better in the schools, everybody's property values.
And said by Steve.
You can look at the numbers.
No, you're right.
No, that's just the way it is.
Steve, Steve does everything through analysis.
I, I would like to sort of look at, and this is probably not the real form, form to do that, but whether or not we might do the roof and any other large capital projects as, as a bond and part...
Maple Road?
Yeah. And, and part of the reason for looking at that, I don't know if we have other things on, on the agenda to look at, but the, um, I assume some people pay attention, but interest rates are going up. They're probably never going to be this low again in my lifetime. And even you people who are younger than me, this is, uh, you know, and of course, you spread it out over, something like a building is at least a 10 or 15-year asset and then you spread it out. I, I really appreciate, partly, that you're looking at, you know, multi-year leases on these things, you know, good, 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 but, um, you know, I think we did very well. I'm so sorry we didn't include Maple Road when we did the roofs on the other buildings because it would have been small.
We were discouraged.
And, and obviously, the other part of that is we get the state to pay for possibility. You provide the super low interest rates with, you know, reimbursement for part of it, and it just makes it so that it's not a terrible hit. I don't know whether there are other things that we have to look, I saw quite a few projects on that, windows and doors and HVAC and, you know, all kinds of maintenance things that might, some of which might be included in that. But I sure would like us to look at that possibility, because when you do it that way, it's honestly, it's fairly easy to sell to the voters. You know, your taxes are going to be this if we do a bond, or they're going to be this if we don't, you know, it's going to be lower taxes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Extending off what Will said, Will, Barbara kindly provided us with a 2010 demographic study. In that study, if I'm recalling correctly, it's been a very long time, I might be wrong, but I believe what it said was that at the time of the study, um, the enrollment was at a certain point where they did not recommend doing anything. At that point, I believe it said that if we fell below 3,500, that that was the time to look at consolidating schools, elementary schools. And we're doing that with classrooms already, maybe it's time to look at that. And we already have a demographic study, so I don't know that we need to pay for a second one.
I think we can do a second one.
Spend the 10 years.
Okay. But if, if we're going to do that and if it says the same thing, I think that the, the smart approach to take would be to put a referendum question on the November ballot to ask the, the townspeople what they would prefer. You know, whether they would prefer to save the money, because if we did something like that, it would free up an awful lot of money toward education and facilities and activities and you name it. So, um, there's a lot of overhead involved that wouldn't necessarily be necessary.
Anybody else have anything else?
I think, I think it's incumbent, I mean, I, I, I do think that if you want to do a demographic study, that would be timely because the state usually asks you to do whatever 10 years is needed, but you're not, you're not going to save teachers because the teachers are going to follow the students.
And, yeah.
So there's not a lot of money that you're really going to save. You know, you'll see a savings in your first year, but after that, it's not going to be there.
The one thing that I would say that I would look at is the fact that when we closed the building before, right now, we're trying to see what we can do to get rid of it, because it fell into disrepair. And we don't, I, I don't think that we want to do that and have that happen to another building and repeat the, the mistake of that history. And I will say when, and I'm only talking for myself, when I moved here, I'm here 30 years now, when I moved here, they wanted to close Maple Road School because they said that the enrollment was down and, and we wound up five years after I, after that, having to redistrict because the district grew in such big numbers. Right now, like Steve said about our, our amount of people that are living here, it, since we can't expand here because of the fact of the watershed property, you're right, the amount of people who live here are the people, you know, it's not going to grow by a whole lot. But what happens is, it runs in a cycle and we have, right now, a lot of older people are, are in town, and those homes are going to sell and then the kids are going to come back. I'm not saying that we're going to come back in the numbers that we're coming, but there's going to be kids again. So, I, I agree that we, I think that there should be a study because, you know, we, we definitely should look at it today, but I, I do see kind of something, history kind of repeating itself in West Milford. Debbie?
I know, I've been very loud this evening, so forgive me for taking time again. The other thing we need to consider is since we're bringing a lot of our special ed children back into the district, they're going to take up classroom space and the ratio for student teachers is much smaller in those classrooms if they are in a special program. So those are going to be additional classrooms that we're going to need. So I, I agree with the study, but I really think we really need to look at our, a, a long-term plan, especially if the goal is to bring our kids back into district. We don't want to close a school and then find out we're really short, short of classrooms.
One, one last question I thought of. Barbara, could you provide us with a projection on what our income's going to be based on this year's, um, this year's state aid?
We don't have any.
State projections? Can you give any kind of projection? We, we keep, there's no way we can intelligently consider whether a 3.5% tax increase is reasonable or not without that information.
This is based upon this number, the state aid dollars that we received last year.
Okay. So this total balances this out?
The total budget that you've been given is based upon our revenues that we received last year in state aid, an adjustment in our extraordinary aid because we did receive less money last year in extraordinary. Overall?
Overall, I know you said three and a half percent. Overall, the budget is only up 1.25%, and that's due in part because of the declining fund balance of over 900,000, diminished state aid over time, diminished federal aid. Our extraordinary aid has been cut each of the last three years, so you add up all those numbers, and yes, the tax, proposed tax increase is here, but other revenue sources are lower, so it balances out to a 1.25% increase. This year's budget, 1718, is, was down less than a, almost 1%, it was 0.88% decrease. The budget before that, 1617, was down a quarter of 1%. So over three years, our budget is roughly flat over the last three years. So it's three very fiscally conservative budgets in a row, and I don't think you could find another district in the entire state that could say that we have had a roughly flat budget over three years, because our costs have gone up dramatically over that time. So, we're working more efficiently. Dr. McQuade is doing a wonderful job running the special services department in the most efficient manner possible, but overall, we're looking at the third of three very fiscally prudent, very fiscally conservative budgets. So that's the number to focus on. The bottom line is 1.25% increase. That's the number to focus on.
Okay. So you're, okay, because the, the opening letter said 3.5. All right.
Now, that's the tax levy increase. The overall budget is 1.2, proposed 1.25% higher.
Right, okay.
If I could just make this clear.
Go ahead.
I think that this board has known that when we sit here in February, these are numbers that we received in November from our principals and supervisors. As we get closer to April, when the final budget has to be approved by the board, we've been able to tweak our numbers, most notably in health benefits. Mr. Drew, I do take some, we've, we've had our discussions about health benefits, and quite honestly, the number that we do have in the budget, this year it's $3 million to offset what we're anticipating our costs are going to be next year, we're, we're pretty close to, to that. You're never going to get to not having any money left in that line item, and I don't think you really want to, because that's really a big thing to handle. But one thing we can't deter, we can't tell who's going to be on a leave of absence and who's going to be paying us for the health benefits dollar for dollar because they're no longer entitled for the board's contribution. And quite honestly, if they're sending us a check for $2,000 a month and they're out for six months on a leave of absence, that's a substantial gain in that line. You're never going to be able to budget that to, to no dollars left. I, I think it's incumbent upon everyone sitting at the table to realize... I think it's incumbent upon everyone sitting at the table to realize that revenues, if we don't meet our revenue expectation and we spend out every line item, we're going to be in a deficit. And that could happen. The $900,000 that we had last year supported our general fund as opposed to doing the capital project. So if that $900,000 had gone to a capital project, we wouldn't need to do that capital project again this year, and so that $900,000 would be a non-issue, because it won't be supporting your general fund budget, which is, which is your everyday items. So I think it's important that, right now, you think about more questions, you know, you need to feel comfortable with what's in there. But historically, we've been able to trim out, especially the health benefits, by the time the final budget is done, because every month, Horizon Blue Cross whittles their number down based upon their claims experience, our claims experience. So, you know, we have an opportunity to save a few hundred thousand dollars, hopefully.
But it also could cost you more, because we could ask people in the district that...
Get very strict.
They have a pretty good idea, and I think that they, I think there's a couple of factors working for this issue. The Affordable Care Act hasn't been, a couple of years ago, the Affordable Care Act factored heavily in the renewal rates, where this year, you're not going to see that. And last year, the governor, Governor Christie, probably the only thing he did really good last year, was he was able to get Blue Cross with Shield to pass along the savings that they were getting from the prescription drug manufacturers. So that helped, you know, keep our premiums stable. But, you know, we're doing everything that we can, but there's some costs that we have no control over, and there's a lot of things that come up that we have no way of knowing it's going to materialize. You know, as I said, these numbers that you're looking at were put together in November of 2017, and we're already four months into that. So, you know, we just do the best we can.
Thank you.
All right. We have five minutes before nine, so I have a softball question for Dr. McQuade. I think I know the answer to it, but I think everybody else in the public should hear the answer. The special services budget went up $180,000 in here, and it adds a couple of positions for speech therapists, occupational therapists, and a little bit more for behaviorists than it was last year. And I think I know the reasons for this, but I think everybody would probably like to hear it.
Sure. I could take a softball question or a different one, it's up to you. But what I will say is that what we're proposing for next year's budget is that we're hoping to open up another autism class. So as you know, we've been opening up autism programs along the way, very slowly over the past several years. Next year's class, we do have, we're expecting to have a full class, which is six students in an autism class. So as you begin to expand our program, and it looks like most of our classes will be pretty filled to start the year in our autism program, so because of that, then services increase in the related service area. So the behaviorist that you notice in the contracted services account does go up to four days, like pretty much we need four or four and a half days that's in there, as well as an increase of OT by three days and speech therapy by three days. So that's why you notice that there is a pretty substantial increase by $168,000. That's to account for the related services that we would need. Now, we did post anticipated, of course, if we can get people interested in a position that's, you know, board position, we would love to do that, but it's budgeted for you in that purchase professional account in case that doesn't happen. Go ahead, Mrs. Star.
Are these autistic classes all West Milford children, or are we taking them from out of district also?
Well, it's a good question, because ideally, we would like to take students from other districts and allow them to come in the program, similar to what we do in our multiple disabled program, but we just don't have the room. Our West Milford students are filling those slots. So right now, we have, we're full right now at all, you know, pretty much all four of our classes we have opened now.
But it still is a savings though.
It is a savings. Yeah. If you, if you actually consider, you know, a $60,000 per student tuition, that's not including, you know, an extended school year and things like that, it's definitely a cost savings to the district to open up our programs. And I do feel it's a best practice. If we talk about what's best for students, it's best for them to be serviced in the least restrictive environment.
So it's an increase in one area and a much larger decrease in another area.
Exactly. Will?
I think it's important to note that, in my opinion, a large reason that the fund balance did decrease by $900-plus thousand is because we did encumber, at the end of the year, $475,000 for the transportation remediation, which was not budgeted in the prior year's budget. So I think we do have to take that into account. So it did decrease, but I think that's in large part.
That's absolutely true, but then you would have had a budget in another budget cycle, so, you know, we, six of one, half dozen of the other. Money needed to be spent one way or the other.
Oh, believe me, behind closed doors, I was arguing to make sure that that happened.
The fact remains that if we didn't take it out of last year's budget, 1617, we would have had to take and put it into 1718 budget. So your 1718 budget would have been $475,000 higher.
That's fair, and I definitely, definitely am on the side of, we needed to do that now, and let's get this done mentality. But I think that it is important to note that. In the future, I am highly concerned for the 1920 budget, where we may be facing the Cadillac tax. No?
That was extended to 2022 for now.
So it's never happened. Let's put it that way. The government's never going to have. Okay, that's good. So that's it. I'm done. I promise.
Steve, maybe one more thing, because then we'll open up for petitions and requests.
Yeah, this should be relatively quick. That account is so big that I agree with you. You don't want to understate that, or you could just blow a huge hole in the budget. And I'd also observed, there's no place in the budget that says, here's the state mandated regular surplus. So someplace, you've got to have something.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
The state mandates, you've got the regular surplus, and then you have the excess surplus. And we never budget the regular surplus.
No, you don't.
So you've got to have some, someplace.
All that does is help your cash flow. That $1.4 million, that's your 2%, it just helps your cash flow. It's required by law to be there.
We don't want to underestimate that account, because it could be a huge hole. The other, one other, real quick observation with regard to the demographics. That's the way the demographics have been. And one of the things that is a factor on that, that seems to be the way millennials are doing things now, okay? However, we have to realize this is also people who've had children right around the recession. And I think almost everybody, when faced with the uncertainty in the recession, lots and lots of people nationwide said, maybe I'll wait to have kids. It's possible that could change. We really don't know. Either way, we're probably going to stay around 26,000 people in West Milford, it's just how many of them are going to be school-age kids.
I don't disagree with you on that at all. I'm just saying, I think you see that the amount of people, like homes, are not going to change badly.
Nope.
Is the board okay to move into petitions and requests now?
Yes.
So I'd like to open up, so, we'd like to open petitions, petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested, well, petitioners wishing to speak during petitions and requests are asked to address the topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. And we are opening this up for five minutes, for speaker, for a period of 30 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Seeing none, move to...
Need a motion?
Move to close petitions and requests.
Second. All goes in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just to clarify, for the video camera in the minutes, the second petitions and requests could be on anything, not just...
Oh, I didn't read that.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, I didn't.
Just want to clarify.
Sees that.
So should we do the one, or should we do all together? Okay. All right. Mrs. Dwyer, would you like to do that part?
Yes. Move to approve item 1 under the petition.
Second. Any discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisca?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion for a settlement. Motion go to executive session and 9:01 PM. We're going to return from the executive session to finish the agenda. Sorry. Can I go home? How are you just going to get? 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 Barbara, could you do one for?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Mr. Huber?
Here.
Mrs. Fritz?
She asked that she...
Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Drew?
Prudential.
Stand up.
Here.
How do you do?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay.
And move to item two.
Okay. Move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to resolve the following hips. 2018 E10 unsubstantiated, 2018 E11 substantiated, 2018 E12 unsubstantiated, and 2018 E13 unsubstantiated.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Francisca? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I need a motion to...
Aye.
Susan Baker?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, see everybody next Tuesday.
Good night.
Yeah.
Oh, everybody, if you would, I gave out articles on popcorn lung. If you wouldn't mind reading them before next week, I'm going to make some motions about that, it's a safety issue.
Oh, I thought we were going to have a quiz. Oh, I thought you... You mean, it has nothing to do with popcorn?
No.
They were talking about the...
I know, yeah. That concept.
It has to do with permanent lung damage from babies.
I'm sorry, the voice gap popcorn.
But I have two or three motions I'm thinking about making with regard to that. And I need to ask...
We don't have the actual proposals on the table.
What's that? Yeah, I was going to ask, I was actually going to ask.